Good afternoon. Before we begin, if you are able, I ask you to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. The camera doesn't see this, but we have a nice crowd with us today, so thank you all for being here. It is Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019, 4:30 in the afternoon, and we will begin our council meeting with a roll call, please.
Brad Hitt?
Here.
Sean Brewster?
Here.
Pete Hamel?
Yeah.
Greg Gills?
Here.
Tom Eggers?
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda is approval of the agenda. There are no changes, so what you see before you is what we will work on. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Thank you. And before we move on to number two, at this time, we will have Eric Mineke come up, and we will have the swearing in as a reserve police officer with the city of Sheldon. And who is going to read the oath? Will Ange read that? Okay, so she'll read, and if you could please follow, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Eric, if you could just raise your right hand for me, please. Repeat after me. I, Eric Mineke.
I, Eric Mineke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold all the laws of the Constitution.
That I will uphold all laws of the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
And the city of Sheldon.
And the city of Sheldon.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of reserve officer.
Discharge all duties of the office of reserve police officer.
For the city of Sheldon, Iowa.
For the city of Sheldon, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Good. That's it. Congratulations.
Mayor?
This is just for you, Trish.
Yeah. I screwed that up. Correct. Oh, I need one more. Need one more. Yeah. Tried to get someone prepared here.
(laughing).
Just like, gonna pay him a hundred grand a year.
That's exciting. Okay, moving on. Number two on our agenda is public comments. At this time, we welcome any comments from the public. If you do have a comment, we welcome you to come up to the podium, share your name and any comments that you have. Okay, everybody's all together. There's no public comments, so we're gonna keep moving forward. Number three is the consent agenda. Before you, you'll notice there's a pay application, change order. Are there any questions regarding those?
Yes. Is that a change in protocol? We've always had those in as business items before.
Yep.
Never lumped in with the...
We changed, we started that last meeting. Since there's not much of a discussion, it's more of a consent. We put them in that area of the agenda. But we're still welcome to discussion if you had questions.
I didn't have questions other than why they're here rather than down.
They're there. Mm-hmm.
Always done, but...
And then the appointments. Media, you have that. Kimberly Hegavell to the library board, and Josh Cryerbrink to commission. The resolution designating official newspapers. I believe everybody has all that information with them as well. Again, questions, comments on consent agenda? And if not, do we have a motion to appro...
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Since there is no discussion, I will have a roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
There is nothing in old business to discuss that I'm aware of, Sam. Do we have anything? Thank you. So moving into new business, number five, there's a few things that we'll need to have discussion on. The first is an engagement agreement for financing of emergency services equipment. We did have, so we'll have to go through with Allers and Cooney. We'll also have to go through and look at the different amortization. What kind of loan do we want to do, the 550, the 650? So I'm gonna have you move forward, if you don't mind, Sam, please, in walking us through each one.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a rather lengthy explanation on this in your packet, and so I won't read through the whole thing, but I'll just briefly summarize it. In your packets are two engagement agreements. You will choose one or the other, or neither. And the $550,000 note is approximately $6,500. The $650,000 note is approximately $7,000. And you might wonder why it would be necessary to have bond council services to begin with, because it seems like a simple, personal-type loan. And although it is like a personal loan, it is more complicated because of the tax-exempt nature of the loan. The loan would involve the need for legal opinion to be provided to the lender and drafting of a loan agreement. Obviously, the largest portion of the cost is the principal amount itself. There's two options to consider, and you could ask for another option if you'd like. A $550,000 note would cover the fire truck, which was approved by the council on November 7, and a $650,000 loan would also cover two police cars. And if you don't mind, Mayor, if I could ask our chief of police to briefly run down the cost of the...
Absolutely.
Cars.
Thank you.
The new state bid price for police cars is right in the $34,000 range. Then in addition, we have to have it outfitted. We always have that done, or the last few years, we've had that done at Carl Chevrolet in Des Moines. That's probably an additional, approximately $13,000. There's an additional expense for mobile data computers as well, but, you know, hopefully, we have enough wiggle room between that and the regular budget for that item. So, and as far as what our existing cars are, we have a 2014 that's got 170,000 miles on it. We have a 2016 that's got 100,000, and then the 2017 has 30,000. We put on approximately 75,000 miles a year between all the vehicles.
Yep, please. Yep, thank you.
So one final note is that Ken Hingefelt with Iowa State Bank had provided us several interest rates for consideration and several different amortization options. One was a five-year note for 2.5 percent, seven years for 2.7 percent, and 10 years for 3.10 percent. Obviously, those are very, very good interest rates. To avoid drafting six different combinations of amortization agreements, I asked him simply to provide a seven-year schedule for both a $550,000 and a $650,000 note. So obviously, the $550,000 note is more affordable than the 650. Both are affordable. It's important to know the impact. If you choose the 650 option, there simply wouldn't be a lot left in that particular fund for large expenses.
Thank you.
The only question I might have is that the fire truck portion of the bill will certainly last that long, but the police car portion of the bill, do we really want to go out 10 years with that? The vehicle won't last that long, will it?
The note's a seven-year note.
There's a, I can't, I'm looking at a five, seven, and 10.
Right.
We, yeah, we asked Ken to just go ahead with the middle of the road, the seven-year.
All right. Okay.
I guess along those lines, there was some information regarding how to decide on whether you go with one vehicle or two. And if I recall, if we were to go with two vehicles upfront, one of the, we would basically gain an extra vehicle in our fleet. Is that correct, Lyle? How would you utilize that?
We had four vehicles for some time. The problem we ran into is the fourth vehicle has to sit outside. It seemed like when we needed it, the battery was always dead. Now with the implementation of the reserve program, you know, that's certainly a possibility that we could, we could just retain one of the vehicles for use.
So would that reduce the yearly mileage?
When I gave you the mileage figure, that was across the board with all our vehicles, so I don't think that. If anything, I think the reserve program could add to the amount of miles we put on in a year.
Okay.
Just because we'll have more coverage.
Okay.
Screen went dark. So what we're looking for on line item 5A is the engagement agreement for financing of the emergency services. There's two scenarios that we can do there, as Sam had mentioned. There's the 550 note, and their fee with Allers and Cooney would be 6,500. And if we went with the $650,000, then it would be a $7,000 fee. And that's what we're looking for today, is the agreement with Allers and Cooney.
And if I might?
Yep, yes, please.
One more thing to add is, this is simply giving Allers the, there's four steps to implementing the agreement. So there's tonight's action, and then next week, or in two weeks, we would have the set for hearing, and then you have the actual hearing, and then you have the closing, first step in the process. And just to compare, in my prior life, just several months ago, I did a similar engagement agreement, and that was for $150,000 for a fire truck. And the cost of the agreement was $6,000. So there's, there's basic costs regardless of the size of the legal fees.
If we would, if we would vote for the $650,000 option, at what point would we actually need these funds? In other words, are we reserving a line of credit, or are we starting to pay interest on this stuff immediately?
It's a great question. Is the, the interest would start November 1 of 2019. That's when, that's when it, when the closing would be set. So we would receive the funds in November, and the interest rate would not start until then. And I can, I can, that was based on when the delivery was going to be for the truck. And we can adjust accordingly if we need to.
So we wouldn't purchase any police vehicles until we purchased the truck?
That's right.
So earlier, you had said there's two options. The two options are 650 or 750, not Allers and Cooney versus Iowa State Bank?
No. If I might? So the, the two options for the note, or note which would cost $6,500 for the, for the legal fees through Allers and Cooney, and then a $650,000 note would, would cost $7,000 through Allers and Cooney. Either option would be financed through Iowa State Bank if we chose the seven-year amortization schedule, and that would be 2.7 percent annually for seven years.
But it's not like we're getting the bond from one or a loan from the other. You need one to get the other.
No. You need one to get the other.
Correct. We have to have, yes, thank you. So this isn't approving Iowa State Bank with the loan. This is approving the service, approving the services with Allers and Cooney.
And the only thing in question is the amount.
Great.
Either way we do it, we have to have their services.
Correct.
Yes.
For, to do the processing of the loan, and so I would, I would make the motion to approve the contract for the $7,000 for putting it all together. And we can always later down the road decide if we want, if we want the cars or not.
Right.
And this way, at least, they'll start the paperwork.
On both.
On both.
Or on that amount.
On the larger amount.
All right. So there's a motion on the table from Brad to go with the agreement with Allers and Cooney for this $650,000 at a $7,000 fee.
I'd support that.
Thank you, Pete.
The last purchases for vehicle, police vehicles, that was from the emergency services fund, or how were those funded?
Yes, they were purchased through the emergency services fund.
And so there are no funds available through that fund anymore, and then we have to borrow the whole works?
Uh, no, I believe we've got a cash balance, but was it there, Sam? Sorry.
We would, if I might?
Yeah.
So we would be financing this upfront, and the payback would be from the, the community protection equipment reserve fund. So what I'd said earlier is if we paid it all back from the, that, from that particular fund, it would leave, on average, about $50,000 annually in the fund, which isn't a lot to do other large expenditures. Might be enough to cover your basic costs expenditures of about $40,000, but you would be spending quite a bit out of that fund to finance the entire truck and two police cars from...
And the truck, I'm not...
The reserve fund.
That's a little bit a different story. That's a much bigger bite to chew off, but the two, the, the police cars is what I'm wondering about. If they need to be, if we had to borrow money to...
How much is it?
To pay for them, or Fannie Burton Service Fund would carry it like it has in the past.
The estimated cash balance for the June 30 of this year is probably about $180,000.
Okay. So that, to me, says there would be money in that fund to not?
The cash is there, yeah.
Okay, and if we would purchase them that way, would we still, then we wouldn't need the services of a bonding company, correct?
Yeah, you still...
Yeah, because we would still have to do the fire truck.
Even if you don't, well...
The discost is $1,000.
If you didn't need it, if you purch, in other words, do you need it to purchase, or do you need it to borrow?
Need one.
To borrow. You need the agreement with Allers and Cooney.
So conceivably, we could, even though we have a motion on the table, we could approve it for a lower amount with a reduced fee, still by the police cars out of other funding that we have available without borrowing money.
Yes, that's where I'm going with this.
Kind of where you're going.
So, if I might?
Mm-hmm.
So what you could do then is you could offer a substitute motion to approve the $550,000 note and authorize the expenditure of the police cars. Then you would just have to decide when, when you'd want to order the police cars. So...
And in the, in our assessment of the fire truck purchase, we're not using that same funding. We were, correct? So it is available to be used for the police car purchase.
What's that?
Trying to answer this off the cuff. If you'd be reducing your, your balance by $100,000 in the end-of-the-year projection, Ange, you would...
$180, $185,000.
Okay, so it's a little bit higher than what I had written down. So you have $80,000 left. You'd have an annual payment of, the most due annually would be $105,000. So that means you would have nothing, virtually nothing left in the fund, depending on when that $105,000, which is the bigger payment, is due.
But we don't get the two cars right away either.
No, you don't.
Right. I mean, that fund will generate, I mean, the emergency service fund with the ambulance calls and such.
See, I think, again, I think this is a topic that we're going to have to tackle during the budgeting process anyway, as far as long-term expenditure. And we've talked about this in the past as a council, because today, we're talking about one fire truck or one apparatus purchase, and we know there's future ones coming down the road if we're gonna stay on the 20, every 20-year, you know, plan. So I think we're gonna have to take a longer view of this through the budgeting process anyway. And if there's not an immediate need for the police vehicles, and we do have an option of maybe utilizing some of the funds out of this account to purchase one possibly, I wonder if we wouldn't be better just to wait to the budgeting process on the police cars, cover the expense for the fire apparatus today with the motion.
If the motion that we have, though...
Pardon?
It can be amended. Your motion can be amended.
Essentially, we're paying an extra fee for something that we may not use.
But if we decide to use it, then we have it.
Correct.
And it's only gonna cost us 500 bucks.
Wasn't it a thou, is it only 500? Okay.
$6,500 versus $7,000.
$7,000.
Yeah.
So...
And that's...
Later, if we don't want to buy the two cars, but if we go through the budget process and we decide we want to do it, then we've got it already in, in the pipeline.
Ange, any thoughts on that?
I've seen us spend a whole lot more money wastefully on engineers.
We would all agree to that.
So $500 is chump change.
No, I'd like to ask Ange, you know, see Ange's opinion on, on some of that, since you are our city clerk, and all the funds are coming through you, and...
The bad thing about that fund is it's a supply and demand. It's only gonna generate revenue if the ambulance goes on transfers. But with that being said, my ambulance, this next fiscal year...
1920.
Yes, which I believe was 200,000, which we typically paid for out of this fund as well.
So then that, yeah, that changes things.
And any equipment, you know, their cap, any capital equipment for all three, the, you know, fire, police.
That's why I think we really gotta deal with it in this budget cycle, because it isn't gonna be more than another couple of years, and this other fire apparatus is gonna be coming up again. And that's gonna be a lot more than 200,000. I mean, this accounts to dry up if we continue on the same route.
I've brought this up several years back. We need to come up with another revenue source for emergency services.
We do. I agree with that. Brad?
But is borrowing the answer? I guess, it goes to Tom's point. I think we need to make a...
Right, and I agree.
Dealists, so we just, the $500, yeah, okay, we spend the extra 500. Now we got that, leave that by us and leave it away.
And what that'll do is it'll start the ball rolling now, and again, when budget time financing of all emergency services.
I agree, and I don't want to get into that today anymore, Mayor. I just want to make a point out of it, though, because, long-term, this is just the first step in a long-term staircase here.
Then I think, yeah, I think we...
Sam, can you ask, can you tell me whether this is a less expensive way of going about securing money for this than going through a bond, just a straight bond?
The flexibility that this gives you is the ability to, to negotiate a lower interest rate holders. It'd be very difficult to get 2.7 percent for a, for a seven-year note, and you would also be subject to the whims of the market in terms of your closing. Here, what we've negotiated with Iowa State Bank is they've offered us a 2.7 percent interest rate plus they're offering a, holding that.
Flexibility.
Holding that all the way until November of this next year.
So we wouldn't actually interest during that time.
And so what you theoretically could do too, Tom, is that if you, if you decide ultimately that you want to pay for the police cars in the inning and then turn back the money because there isn't a penalty for prepay.
Sure.
Okay.
So that would be one option.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I answer the question?
Yes, sure.
$500 for the flexibility as well.
You can use the borrowed $650,000 for any permitted purpose under the statute. It doesn't have to be for a designated...
It has to be for emergency services vehicles.
Yes, within the scope of that category.
Right.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be for one fire truck and two police cars. There's different combinations in ways you can spread it around.
I can confirm that with Allers and Cooney tomorrow, but I believe you are correct. Good.
Okay. So the motion on the table is $650,000 note, and they have a fee of $7,000, and that's still in place with Brad and Pete. Is there any further discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Ken?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, under five, letter B, we have a change order, the first change order for the fire truck purchase. And the most up-to-date email that came in this afternoon is, it is in a, the amount of a credit of $707. Brad, can you share with us on what that entails, please?
Just the whole list of things, but the biggest thing was a change in the light bar in the front.
The light bar, okay.
So there's a, the most obvious one we changed was a light bar, and that was the deduction.
A deduct of 707. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve change order number one for the fire truck purchase?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
All right. Next on our agenda is regarding the Crossford Pavilion. We have three different items to take action on. The first is accepting the resignation of Brittany Berensen, our current pavilion general manager. Do we have a motion to accept Brittany?
Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Ken?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you. Then the next, under five, approving the job posting and description. We did make a couple of changes to that from the last time we ran the ad, and we will begin running that ad after today as soon as possible. Look, yes, please, thank you.
So in your, in your packet, Mayor and council, is the, the draft for the ad. I've received a, approved today from Denise at the review. Looks really good. We're looking at putting the ad Northwest Iowa Review, the Golden Shopper, posting it. I'll post it with career placement officers at area colleges. I'm working on a, on an ad with KIWA, and then I also plan to post it with the Iowa League of Cities, and if you have any other ideas, let me know.
Sounds good. Any questions on the job posting description? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll support that, but what, what were the changes that were made from previously?
If I might?
Yes, it was very simple changes. But go ahead, Sam.
Mainly formatting, formatting, removing some, some, some dead space. Added, added page numbers. I also changed, at the recommendation of the board, changed some information relating to how the board members interact with, or how, how the pavilion manager helps select the board members. And Mr. Wagner assisted us with that, recommending that we, that we not have in the job description that the general manager will help select board members. So we cleaned up the language there, and the rest of it's basically the same.
Good.
Very simple things. Like before, we had a Sheldon, Crossford Pavilion, just, there were some simple little things as far as that. So Greg, you second that?
I did, yes.
Is there any other questions then regarding the job posting and description? May I have a roll call, please?
Eggers?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
And then the next... May I have a roll call, please?
Eggers.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
And then the next, uh, item is discussing the appointment, uh, or hiring of an interim General Manager and Assistant. Um, at this time, would you like to go into closed session for that? I don't know how much discussion we would have, Heather or Pete. Council, do you have any questions regarding the information? Not posting, but the Crossroad Pavilion Board has recommended and approved and brought it here to the City Council that Heather Jacobs be appointed the interim General Manager until we go through the due process of hiring a new General Manager. She would be compensated similar to what we did when we were without a city manager, and, uh, of two thousand dollars extra a month, and then also hiring of, um, Pete Hamel's assistants not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars in the time that he would put in for the interim of without a General Manager.
I guess I have some questions that I would prefer to ask in closed session, but I wonder if we can do that after the other stuff, so that these people don't have to wait around.
Okay. We will move that to the end.
And just to be clear, um, the request for closed session would have to come from Heather and/or from Pete, so that we can discuss, um...
Yep.
Their qualifications and performance.
Okay, so we're going to move that to the end, we'll come back to that then. Thank you.
Will one of those make that request?
When we get there.
Okay.
If you have questions for them, I think they would want, rather that be in a closed session, correct? Heather? Okay. Pete? All right. Our wonderful audience, camera doesn't pick you all up, I think you should all have to come back here, wave, and I hope, we never have an audience like this. Um, so let's move on into, uh, number six, reports. Jake Kerr, you have a report on the recreational division. Nice to see you, Jake.
Nice to see you, everyone, thanks for having me, uh, again, every year.
Every year. You can come more often.
I don't know.
I'll come when you guys just asked me, how about that? So, um, a current update that we have going on is, uh, Monty, our old rec coordinator,
how does that, she's currently no longer with us, so, uh, Greta Geese and myself are in the process of hiring for that position, uh, just to give you guys an update currently for that, uh, rec coordinator position. Um, and if you guys, some of you aren't aware, that's a, a shared position with the Lifelong Learning Center, also NCC, um, so that's why Greta is involved in that. Um, so, uh, we had a total of twenty-eight applications for that position. Um, cur- uh, currently, Greta and I have already went through the process of phone interviews, um, and, uh, we're already starting our process for, uh, one-on-one interviews currently right now, and we have a total of eight applicants for that. Quite a bit of applicants from all over, mostly this area too, so, uh, it was hard for us to narrow it down much as we could, but that's kind of what we did for that, so...
I think that's a good sign of what you have going on in our city, so kudos to you for that. I, I don't think you'd have that many people if they didn't realize that good things happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, I appreciate it. Um, so then now currently, we'll just go to, uh, the recreation update, um, I think you guys have some information regards, uh, participation and everything like that with numbers and so on and so forth, um, just to kind of give you guys an update on maybe what's new, uh, that we did this year for the two thousand eighteen season. Um, so we actually, I got, um, asked me to do a program with him, so we did, we started a third through sixth grade, uh, flag football program, um, so example, I did all the management, the scheduling, uh, the emails and all that, while they, um, had, uh, the practices and the games and all that, so, and we also did that with the NFL flag, flag football program, so they got their cool jerseys and, and stuff like that, so that was kind of fun, and, um, we hope to keep going, uh, with that partnership with them, so we always like partnering with people because it makes our life easier, and we have the tools to help them as well, so. Um, another thing that we added was, um, we did, we, we changed that instead of jazz and dance, uh, because of the young age, um, and we saw, uh, a good response for doing that class, so, uh, so that's just some program updates that we had, uh, some facility updates, maybe, if you guys are wondering, like, upgrades on facilities for our rec programs. Um, example, this fall for the city fields, uh, we put new benches in, uh, we painted the dugouts, uh, we fixed the backstop, so balls were getting under the fence and everything at City Field, so over there, so, um, and then we power washed the brick too, so, um, so it looks a little cleaner and nicer over there, so. Um, another thing too that we've been doing is, um, adding soccer goals, new soccer goals to our outdoor, uh, program, we used to currently have, um, welded steel ones that, um, took a while for us to put up, so now we're making, uh, an effort to get regular-sized soccer goals for, for our youth outdoor program. Okay.
Sorry.
So, so that's okay, so that was, that's just an update on our rec so far, so, um, and then our Sheldon Outdoor Aquatic Center, um, you can see, uh, the stats on that as well. Um, just some brief updates for the next year, um, ordered new umbrellas for the Sheldon Outdoor Aquatic Center, so we will be getting new umbrellas, the old ones were disastrous. Um, so we are in the process, or so we, we actually do have them ordered, so, uh, we are good on that, on that front, so you'll see that they, we already took them out and everything, so they'll be ready for the spring, uh, to install. Um, and we purchased a water basketball hoop, so kids can shoot there. Um, I should give a big thanks to the Sheldon, uh, Noon Koones, because they donated that money for us, uh, we just paid for the shipping for that, so that'll be a new addition to the aquatic center this year, so. Had a, a really good turnout, we had twenty-six lifeguards for the two thousand eighteen season, so we are pretty lucky here in Sheldon, didn't have any issues this year with that, so, um, but I'd like to answer any questions that you guys have in regards of anything?
Overall, uh, year at the aquatic center looks very good, and, uh, I did notice, though, that membership revenue was down...
Yeah.
Compared to the past couple of years.
Yeah.
It's, uh...
I mean, uh...
Any idea, maybe...
Yeah, um, especially what we saw when, just comparing it to last year was, uh, it was more like, uh, adult punch cards is what we were seeing, the lowest one for that. Um, I mean, last year, we had a record thirty-two, so, uh, or second highest, I should say, so, um, but when it comes to family outdoor, um, we're seeing increases as well with that, so that's a good, that's what we like to see too, so, um, and, and we, and we did see a pretty good increase in daily attendance, too.
I saw that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering if they were balancing that out, or...
I wish I had that answer. Sometimes it's, uh, a little confusing in that, but, uh, at least we're seeing increases in, you know, the family outdoor, and, and we like to see that. Punch cards are kind of, they're kind of wild sometimes, and...
Jake, um, do you staff the indoor pool, the lifeguard there, or does the hotel line that up on there?
Uh, we, we do not staff the indoor pool, um, uh, we don't...
Okay.
Uh, maintenance or anything, we don't do anything.
But I didn't know if any of our lifeguards, if you coordinated the staffing of that, so I just wanted to check.
No, I don't think so, but I would probably say the benefit of me doing the lifeguarding class, being the lifeguard instructor has probably helped them a little bit too, um, in regards of, uh, getting more people to work there, so, so it's kind of a benefit for both of us.
Okay. Great. Any other questions regarding, it's awesome, good job, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hopefully you'll get, uh, great support too with that new part-time, uh, help whenever you...
Yep, and we'll keep, and we'll keep you, we'll keep everyone posted on that, so you guys are aware too as well, so.
Right.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next, regarding the rec department, uh, the Park and Rec Board has requested that we approve a babysitting pass for the pool, um, before you, yep, don't sit down yet, Jake, you better come right back up here. I could read this whole memo, but what it has come down to is what you're seeing and hearing is families would like us to work with them on it, to have the babysitter, so the babysitter pass could be added to the Sheldon Outdoor Aquatic Center family member pass for an additional thirty dollars. Only one babysitter is allowed to be registered on the family's membership, the babysitter is only allowed to use the family's babysitter pass when attending the outdoor aquatic center with at least one child from the family membership. When not caring for the child or children on the family membership, the babysitter is responsible for their own pool entry. Um, babysitters must be of sixteen years of age, I think this is a good idea.
Yeah, um, and this has been brought up for multiple years, and, and myself and obviously people in Sheldon, I think this is a great idea. Um, I did the research too, I wanted to make sure that we had our ducks in a row, um, out of this exact pass, um, with the other one doing, they have like a, a punch card discount instead, but all the other towns, five of thirty to thirty-five, whatever, based on their pool and how bigger it is possibly. So we went ahead and did the research to, uh, place of pools in the area too, so...
I think it's a good idea, and then I'll be anxious to hear next year, uh, those numbers on how that turned out.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
The, uh, babysitter pass for the pool, Greg?
The only thing that struck me is, is why thirty dollars, why not free? Why not do the...
Just went by, uh, I just went by what the other towns are doing, um, in regards of how they, when you look at most towns, this is thirty dollars was basically what every single town did that has this pass.
I mean, if we're going, trying to...
Yeah.
But, I mean, what's the rationale for the thirty dollars, other than...
Uh, more affordability for parents, uh, for families.
Why not make it more, more, even more so, take it to the...
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I could look it up.
Hundred thirty-five, one thirty-five.
Hundred, uh, okay, now...
Everybody's throwing numbers at you. One fifty.
I believe one twenty is.
Okay.
Right, it is, Greg, they're already, I mean, right now, they're gonna buy a punch card, buy a pass, buy one, it's very... That's kind of where the...
Right.
...come from, I mean, and it's already discounted hugely, set as the industry standard in surrounding communities, so that's where the numbers came from.
Right.
What others are doing, and it's already saving somebody, incentive their kids there, if they're bringing anybody from out of town.
I don't either, but, I mean, to, to me, I mean, if it was mom coming with their kids, we, it would, they would come in on the family pass. Now, instead of mom, it's the babysitter, the thirty bucks, I mean, that's, that's, that's my only, that was my only reaction, if you want to keep it at thirty, I'm fine with that, but...
I thought we sold a family pass at ninety-five dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
It just, if, if, to me, that makes it more of an incentive, but it's thirty bucks one way or another, it's not, if they're gonna do it, then most likely...
Yeah, we just, Greg, we just went by, like, what other towns have been doing that are kind of in a, so that's kind of how we figured that out, we figured we should do the research and kind of go from that.
But we're a fan, we're the town where families come first.
You should revamp it after next summer, but...
And we, and I would say, we probably did a little more, ours is a little, we want to make sure that we had the rules here, too, compared to other ones, when I was looking at other, so then you guys don't have to...
Right.
No one's calling you guys, and everyone, so then we have that down, so that's kind of why we wanted to make sure, it's a little more detailed than you would say most towns, so...
Sure. Well, thank you for putting that work and effort into it, and Greg, for your comments, appreciate it, we'll see what happens next year, maybe we'll...
Very good.
...incentivize it better, thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, then, do we have a motion to approve the babysitting pool pass?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Further discussion? A roll call, please.
Hamel.
Brewster. Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Thank you, and now we'll move into reports from the Sheldon Community Ambulance Team, Kevin and Dakota, and your support team behind you. We all know if your pagers go off, we're just gonna clear the way, okay, so just don't mind us.
At least we'll have a good response time.
You just do what you gotta do, all right?
Okay. Good afternoon. Before I delve into any of the areas those that serve in any capacity to make these numbers possible, if you are on any of the Sheldon, Sheldon Emergency Services, please stand. Please give them a round of applause. It may be not said enough, but we appreciate all that you guys do. Since I joined the ambulance team in two thousand fifteen, I have seen change trials, and I have seen successes. In two thousand eighteen alone, we had six hundred and twenty-five calls, six hundred and fifty-eight patients this year. For those calls, three hundred and eighty-nine of those were nine-one-one calls, and two hundred and thirty-six of them were transfers from the Sheldon or surrounding hospital. One thing that we pride ourselves on is our quick response time. From the second our pagers go off to the amount of time our ambulance rolls out the door is approximately four-point-three minutes. This does not count any first responders that may show up on the scene prior to our arrival. We stay on scene for about ten-point-two minutes and transport to the nearest facility. We have dealt with quite a few, we have dealt with quite a few different situations, and each one of those situations, be able to handle the different calls that we have without our dedicated men and women on our team. We currently have thirteen EMTs, one AMT, one AEMT, two paramedics, two nurses, and five drivers. These numbers do include fire. Without the help of fire, we have twenty-two members altogether, which lea- which leaves us with five RN medics and EMTs, eleven EMTs, and then we do have our two high school students. I would not be able to do my job without any of these people, especially my fellow officers, Kristen, Maria, and Dakota. Those sons and sisters in other emergency services remain endless. We appreciate the community's support and are proud to be the Sheldon Community Ambulance Team. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the year-end report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are transfers up this year over last?
Most definitely, yes. Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Went through our statistics. Any questions regarding the report from last year, two thousand eighteen? Okay. Are you going to then bring us into the...
So I first want to point out, um, that SCAT will be fifty years old in two thousand twenty-one. SCAT was founded in nineteen seventy-one with the mission to preserve and enhance quality of life by providing comprehensive emergency medical services skillfully and compassionately. At every orientation of each new member, they are read this mission statement. We believe that it's important to hold ourselves accountable to this mission in all that we do, whether it be running calls, writing policies, or creating a strategic business plan, it all matters. The fact of the matter is, the numbers above are not just numbers, there's patient names behind each number, there's a family member behind each number, there's a mother, father, sister, brother, son, and daughter, who does patient care, and they are what matter to us. Imagine this, a nine-one-one call goes out, five minutes later, another page goes out, five minutes later, another agency gets called, still, no one's around to answer the call. Unfortunately, this is becoming the reality of EMS, not only in Northwest Iowa, not just in Iowa, but nationwide. Remember when I told you that SCAT was fifty years old? Yeah, EMS is still not an essential service. This means that we rely on the funding from our fundraisers, calls, and support from the city. However, the above situation does not define us, the tragedy in Archer does not define us. SCAT recognizes that to define us. SCAT believes in ser- in serving our surrounding communities, we believe if we get called, we will respond. However, we understand that it is vital to use our resources wisely. This is why we are requesting a new ambulance without trading in, so we can have a fleet of three. This will not only allow us to serve the transfers adequately, but also the nine-one-ones calls as well. This would ensure that we have one ambulance in town at all times. that we have one ambulance in town at all times. There would be no exceptions to that rule. There have been many concerns about sending SCAT 1 and SCAT 2 out on transfers at the same time. The truth is, they are still patients and citizens or patrons of Sheldon and deserve the same level of higher level care. By purchasing, we would guarantee a transport unit in Sheldon 24/7. On top of having a third ambulance, we see hiring additional staffing. There are many times we are, when we are having trouble with staffing, and we see that by hiring additional, preferably medics, we could be staffed with ALS 24/7. Having staffing trouble is nothing new and is common everywhere. It is a matter that society as a whole is spreading themselves thin when it comes to workload, and unfortunately, volunteerism is a dying practice. We are the nearest ALS for agencies traveling to the Sheldon Hospital. ALS can provide a higher level of care that has proven to be more effective in certain cases. We also would be guaranteed to have a medic available for transfers. We are trying new things, moving our meetings to every other Thursday at 6:30, and reaching out to the younger generation more. We also see incentives such as gaining new members, increasing our service area, increasing our policies that will handle our higher call volumes, and increasing the trainings that we receive as SCAT members. The vision of our future can be clouded at times, but we know if we all work together and communicate, we can better serve the citizens and patrons of Sheldon. Does anyone have any questions about our vision?
When you say new ambulance, you're talking brand-new or another ambulance?
Um, we, in the future, we would be looking for a brand-new ambulances.
Okay, because you're well aware, there is an ambulance going on, up for bid or auction. Is that one, would that meet your criteria?
Um, for the third ambulance, we did present that information to you guys as an option for that third ambulance until we would rotate out.
Right now, right now in your rotation, what is, what is that right now for a new ambulance based upon, now what he mentioned?
Like, what's our standard?
Yeah, what's your standard?
Sure.
What does that look like from a timeline?
Um, we usually rotate out every three years. That's why you see it on the budget for this next year, 16. And actually, our SCAT 2 that we currently has, have, has more miles than our SCAT 2 that we traded out. So we are seeing that higher call volume, which is why we're looking at keeping on that strict three years.
I'm probably gonna be very unfair to you, but do you understand how many miles are on the unit right now?
How many miles? On SCAT 1, we have a hundred and, excuse me, sorry, we have 42,000.
Okay.
And SCAT 2 currently has, I believe, 116,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And what is the working life of an ambulance in terms of miles typically?
Um, honestly, it depends on, some services, they'll keep them until they're like 160, 180. So it really does depend on those ambulances. But we like to keep it, usually for Sheldon, we like to keep it like 120 or less, just because of all the wear and tear we're putting on it.
A question regarding the vision. You asked if we had any questions on that.
Of course.
Am I interpreting through your comments that you look at SCAT as being a growing entity regionally?
Um, I think, you know, that's the vision that I have in mind. And I think, you know, talking with the SCAT team at meetings, that's kind of the vision that we do, everything that's happening in the surrounding communities. We do look at it that way, yes.
So do you foresee a situation similar to Archer happening in another area, community around us?
Um, I don't think today or tomorrow, but I'm, I think if things don't change, we will see that within the next 20 years at least.
Okay.
Kevin, how many on-call at one, are on-call at one time?
Um, we try to have three on-call at one time plus a fourth, so like a high school student.
Okay. Does that include the, for backup for the second ambulance, or do you have?
SCAT 1 is the rig that we staff 24/7. That's the one we have a call scheduled on. Our SCAT 2 is a mass response ambulance, which means anyone that's available, please respond.
And do you get good turnout when that has to happen?
Um, honestly, our SCAT 2, until just recently, we haven't had any calls that have gone unanswered by SCAT 2. Recently, I'll be honest, there has been a few accidents where there hasn't been enough people going to SCAT 2 because they've been late night. Usually, we do have good turnout for that.
So if you get to a third ambulance, would you have schedules on two ambulance at one time then, or would you still go with a mass call?
Um, I think that's something internally, we would kind of look at and see what the best practice for that would be. But in all honesty, I could see us potentially having at least, you know, one person scheduled for that ambulance. Just roughing, rough estimate right now. But I think it's something we would heavily look at.
Right now, Kevin, there's times when both ambulances are gone out of town, correct?
That is correct.
And if you had a call in, then what?
So I.
But if both ambulances are out of town.
Sure. So our policy right now is that if SCAT 1, SCAT 2 are out of town, then we would have Sheldon Fire Rescue gets paged to go to the scene. They do have medical personnel on there, and then they would call for a transporting unit from an area town.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
With the private ambulance service that's currently in town, it's been a year, what, five years?
I would say four years.
Four years?
Mm-hmm.
How does your call volume now compare to five years ago then?
So I can, we had 444 calls that year, and that's when Midwest like first started coming to town. The hospital was really excited about them, and they had staffing. Unfortunately, what we're seeing right now is that we're having a lot of the transfers, because one, we have medics that are available to go on them, and two, this is all hearsay, but it doesn't sound like they have adequate staffing some of the time, and so the hospital is relying on us. We're sending nurses with us.
So we are approaching or exceeding, prior to your time, we're approaching what it was back then when there was just SCAT?
Then.
Okay.
For clarification, does, does Midwest communicate with?
That's a negative. They do not. Thank you. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Let's talk about vision real quick. Do you mind? Do you have any other questions about third ambulance?
I do.
I was reading through some of your community service projects, and one of the things you have hosted is you'll host a donation supper at the Autumn Park Apartments for Christmas. That's something you haven't done, or you just started to do?
So each year, SCAT always goes to the members, and we get donations to do something for Christmas. And it's something that they've been doing before my time. It's just kind of paving something that we want to do. Last year, we donated to Cadence Closet.
Yep.
And then this year, we are actually gonna go to the Autumn Park Apartments and have a supper there with them, and then play like simbingo with them.
Nice.
Just to kind of go in there and interact with the community more.
Sure. Very nice. And we won't go on too many questions, because there's a couple of things that I'd like to point out. We are gonna have a workshop on our next council meeting, January 16. We plan to have a workshop with council regarding the ambulance situation with Archer, so we can get further discussion into that too. But talking about vision, and Dakota, I know you're what, you're 20 now? That's right. Happy birthday, whenever that was. You're interested at such a young age. Are we going into schools to recruit, or do we just make a presence? Are you actively trying to recruit, you know, younger people to get into SCAT as well? I mean, what, what more are you doing? I love the chicken dinners or the dinners that you have that draws people in, but as far as actually getting recruitment of, are you interested in being that person?
Sure.
I can't do it. I'd faint at blood. But for those who can, what do you do to encourage them to try to become involved?
So usually, we just go to people's houses, hand out pagers, and say, you're on.
I'll go with you.
We do go into the high schools. I know when I was on full-time, we did send letters to the high schools, letting them know about our student program. From that, I think we have one high schooler that's still on. I mean, they do stay with us, obviously, until they go off to college.
Sure.
Um, we also have posted like flyers in local businesses to try to recruit. I know our social media, we're trying that to reach the younger generation with different things. And then on my end, from an NCC aspect, I'm also, you know, trying to promote, bringing the word out there about EMT classes, and trying to get people interested in talking to their local agencies. Just because you never know when you're gonna find that potential person.
Sure.
So we really encourage people to, you know, go out and apply for SCAT or the Fire Department or EMA. And obviously, you read in the media, what I did with Archer, I went door-to-door, literally, and we're talking to people. Sheldon, when I was selling tickets, I had a letter that I passed out when I was selling tickets to see if there was anyone interested. And we are trying different things, and hopefully, we'll get more people, so.
Good question. And, well, both of you, actually, so I thank you for that. Hi, just before, any other, go ahead, Brad.
Where do you see SCAT and their staffing with part-time and full-time people in the next three to five years? With the way volunteerism is continually dwindling, and the way these calls are coming in, you know, it's 100 and some more than last year. You're gonna end up with more staff down the road. What kind of plans do you have with that?
Absolutely.
We gotta start thinking long.
So obviously, we have a full-time person right now. She's putting in the hours to cover our calls. In the future, I think we definitely would be looking at hiring potentially another full-time person. This would, hopefully, those two positions would intermingle with working the night shifts, the weekends, the day shifts, and getting all those shifts covered. As for part-time people, I'm just looking at different situations across our area. I know Sioux Center, they hired, I think, six-time part-time medics at one time. And so that's something I think we could, you know, entertain, cover. But I think definitely in the next, you know, especially two to three years, I could see hiring another full-time person for SCAT.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Kevin, quick question for you. Could you, could you share with us your vision on where the, how the storage would happen of the third ambulance if we were able to secure a third one?
Um, as for the storage, I think, so I know we have talked to EMA briefly. Obviously, we didn't want to make any concrete plans without talking to you guys first. We have talked to EMA and ideas for the ambulance. There are other options, you know, that we could explore, you know, with, I'm not saying this has to happen, but the Fire Department, if, you know, they did have extra room, we could potentially look at that, or, you know, looking at any other stalls that might be available for use.
Okay.
But, good question.
Yeah.
If you'd be willing to explore that with us for the workshop on the 16th, and then you and I can talk about it too between.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Awesome. So just, any other questions for Kevin? Just a couple of things I'd like to point out regarding their ambulance. Tomorrow, January 3 at 7:00 PM at the Archer Library, they will be having a meeting. Tuesday, January 9, the Courthouse Assembly Room. The main topic for this meeting is for township discussions regarding the rural fire service. Let's see what else. The invitation includes township clerks, trustees, chief administrators, EMS directors within Obran County. Tuesday, January 15, the Obran County Board of Supervisors has a meeting at 9:00 AM. And then again, Wednesday, January 16, we'll have our workshop where we'll get further discussion after the council situation with Archer and their ambulance, et cetera, et cetera. So we can talk more later about that, so.
Sure.
But thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Just want to make sure I don't miss anything. Yes.
And to go along with your comments, to the extent that you're planning for your next workshop or these various meetings, I would encourage council to take a look at chapter 38 of our Code of Ordinances as a starting point for what's in place regarding our ambulance service at this time.
Chapter 38. Thank you, Micah. Okay. Thank you. Yes. Thank you very much. Thanks, Dakota. Glad, yeah, well, glad you stayed. We'd make you blush. Thank you. Okay, where are we? Next, we have a city manager's report. Are there certain things that you would like to touch based on?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind everyone, there's a report that is now in your packet after the council agenda. It's also linked on the website. It's an eight-page report. We'll not go through it all. Just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to, to take a look at that. Reminder that the budget workshops are coming up fast. Tuesday, January 29 at 4:30, and Wednesday, the 30th at 4:30. Also have some information in the packet regarding the backfill, which will probably be the upcoming legislative session. There's a good explanation on that in your packet. And there's also information regarding the vision that the council here has laid out in, in the past, and that information packet as well, and is being used as guidance as we work on the 2019, 20 budget. That's all I have.
Thank you. Before we go into our closed session and get back to Crossroads Pavilion, I'll ask for comments now from staff. Anything? Kurt, anything new on the hopper?
Just real quick, I did send a memo to, to the media last week, too. Our next community workshop for the community park is set for January 21, and that's a workshop session open to the public from 6 to 7 out of Crossroads Pavilion. So I'm asking the media's help in getting that word out there, and then as we plan, you know, it's a few weeks out, we got some time to get it out, so I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Kurt.
Nothing.
Council, anybody? Okay. So there are no comments. So at this time, we'll go back to new business under item C3. Heather, Pete, would either of you like to go into closed session to discuss? Yes? Thank you. All right, then, do we have a motion to go into closed session to discuss the interim general manager and assistants?
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Rooster.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Hans.
Aye.
Hamel.
Upstane.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay, when we go into closed session, I thank you all for coming. We meet here every first and third Wednesday of the month. Open meetings, you can all.
Sorry, go by. Those people keep going by and they're looking at me.
Your name is boss.
Okay, it is now 6:02 PM. We are out of our closed session. So under new business regarding the Crossroads, the Crossroads Pavilion Board has recommended the hiring of an interim general manager of Heather Jacobs, and Heather is to receive an additional $2,000 per month. Are we gonna do two motions on this, or one? Two. So the first will be Heather Jacobs, and an additional $2,000 per month, as well as 40,000, 40 hours of, geez, Tricia, 40 hours of vacation time, and this amount of vacation time will be added on at the end of this interim period. I want to make sure I'm saying that correctly. And this additional pay will start?
December 27.
December 27, 2018, and will go through until we have hired a general manager and their first pay period. Do we have a motion to approve this recommendation by the Crossroads Pavilion Board?
I'll make that motion as a recommendation from the board.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Brewster?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
Abstain.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hans?
Aye.
Yeah, and that one you didn't have to abstain, Pete, because now we're, thank you. We're gonna do a second motion, and this is a recommendation again from the Crossroads Pavilion Board to approve the hiring of Pete Hamel in an amount not to exceed $1,500 for the assisting of the general manager at the Crossroad Pavilion. In our letter, providing less than 80 hours services of work, Pete can put in the hours that he needs to, when he needs to, but not to exceed $1,500. After that, the board has recommended going down the line to the next qualified individual on the board to fulfill those assisting needs.
They've built in the idea of any qualified person, not necessarily just a board person.
Thank you, Pete. Any qualified person.
At any time.
At any time. There we are.
Not that the board people aren't qualified.
All right. I'm just, I wanna make sure I'm clear on that. Right now, we're approving you, and if anyone else comes up, then we'll go through that process as well. Okay? So right now, it's regarding Pete Hamel.
If I could state something?
Yes, please.
I think, I think it's important to state for the record that we won't come back to the council on every memo unless it involves another, another council member.
Right.
I, this is the template for, for future appointments.
Thank you.
And I'll work with the city attorney on that to determine when that needs to be brought forward.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve Pete Hamel?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a roll call, please? Oh, sorry.
We have time for comment?
Yes.
Is this until a new manager is hired?
Pete will help as much as-
Anybody.
Anybody, until a new manager is hired.
Okay, until new manager is hired, then?
Right. But right now, what you're approving is just Pete.
For 80 hours.
For 80 hours or $1,500.
I thought Mike also said using this and Sam about using it as a template moving forward. I just wanna make sure that when we hire a GM, are we gonna still continue to pay a consultant?
No, this is just an interim decision. Yeah, you're approving the interim concept of $1,500 for assistance.
I did scramble that up pretty good, so thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion then? Roll call, please. Hans?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye. I abstain.
Gills?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Thank you. And last on our agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Tom, did you support?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call, please?
Hans?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Ab- aye.
Gills?
Aye.
We are adjourned.